Basketball games because there's JV and then varsity, there's a certain rate for an hour and a half or two hours or whatever it might be. I don't know off the top of my head. Now look at Rachel for across country. I don't know what.
This was a special event.
Yeah, it was their big meet on a Saturday. Yeah. It was a big meet. I mean, I can speak. There was a big meet on a Saturday where, and I'm not even sure if we'll be doing that one next year. What I understand is.
Is that the one that we inherited from?
It's from the Oshkosh. We inherited it from Oshkosh. Yeah.
It was kind of on a two-year deal or something?
Two years. It might be another year if they don't get the course set up in time. So I think that that's where that money comes from.
So that was, I think, a special occurrence on that.
I think they had to be there, I want to say eight to eleven thirty or something. They were there pretty much all morning.
More than just an hour? Okay, go home.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know the specifics as far as start time at that time though.
Okay. And does that help, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? James, anything?
No.
You look like you were pondering.
No. I was pondering last night's six dollars per person. I took my whole family. That was something I said.
Oh, well, that was because of your region.
And I know that goes WIA right.
So when it comes to tournament series, there are no passes that are good anymore. There's no, everything is WIA controlled because it's a WIA playoff matchup. So there's very strict financial calculations that occur because WIA wants their money, basically is what it involves.
What is that? What is that money go for then? The WIA takes in also, because I paid like thirty-six bucks to my family here last night. I was just wondering, where does that go to? I mean, what do they do with it? Who else, right?
It goes to their revenue. I don't, I don't know if it's for their, if that goes right to their general fund or if there's a specific purpose. I mean, does all the volleyball take go in then to provide professional development for volleyball, specific, you know, coaches clinics and review of policies, publication materials? I don't know that. I can call them back if you'd like to know.
I don't know. Maybe, but that's fine. I was just, I was looking at it last night.
Yeah. But that's, that's what happens every playoff game is that the school has a very, I mean, we get a, we get a form and you have to fill out, you know, how many tickets are sold and how much for each of different levels. And then there's a certain formula that if you don't make a certain amount, then they take half or something. If you make over a certain amount, then they get a, you know, two-thirds or it's, it's a little bit goofy, but bottom line is WIA wants their money.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the bills for the financial statements?
I'll make it.
Okay, Matt, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And so the motion was carried. All right, public comment. Do you hear me?
There are none.
There are none. Oh. All you people are just here because you like us so much to restore your vote? Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad to see that. All right, communication, district administrator report.
Start off with a couple of donations that came in. And again, if you remember, this is a policy that we had adjusted that if it was under, kind of move my cursor so that doesn't pop up. Sorry about that. That if it's under a certain dollar amount that we can accept it. So we did have Service Motor Company donate four hundred and sixty-six dollars. I don't know, is there additional comment for that donation?
Nope, just that they ran with Culvers. So half the money came from Culvers and half came from Service Motors.
Subs Wisconsin Electrical Op, donated fifty dollars to the art department. Two hundred and fifty dollars came in from the Portage County Dairy Promotion Committee. Any comments on that?
FFA members worked in agriculture education booth at the dairy breakfast this summer.
Awesome. So if you have, I'm pretty sure you've already written thank you to them. If you could get us their contact info, we will also send something to the district office. That'd be great. Graduating options, I just want to inform the board that myself and Jason Huska, who's our special ed person, and Aaron and Colton have had some preliminary conversations about graduation options. Jason and I attended a meeting with DPI and basically, not trying to come up with an easy path, but we are finding that specifically in special ed, there's some students that were already credit deficient going into COVID and now they're coming out of COVID extremely credit deficient. So one of the things that the superintendent from Iowa and I have looked into would be kind of a, you could create, school districts can create what they call a district of innovation. And basically it pairs regular education, traditional education, along with on-the-job type of work. And so they, they have to earn the same amount of credits, but they do it in a different means. So if they went to work in a carpentry shop, they could earn math credits by the measuring and the cutting and the angles and the geometry of cutting shapes in wood. And so that would then count, if the board decided to do that, that could count for what they would call a technical diploma. And it'd still be a Roshel diploma, it'd just be attained via different means. It's not meant to be for every single student. It's meant to be for one or two students. And there's certain requirements that would have to come about to get that. We did have a meeting with the alternative education person from DPI. During that meeting, she had stated that there's a number of districts that have alternative pathways to graduation. There's a blended hybrid model that, that she shared with us that some schools, if you have a kid that is, is good in math, that usually means that they're fairly decent in science because those two usually go hand to hand. And then they could, some schools accept the GED or HSEG exams for English and for social studies. And then there are certain credits that you have to attain according to DPI, but then they would accept two equivalency tests and coursework for the other part. And that would then also equal a high school diploma. So we're looking into this. There's no recommendation on the board. We're just trying to understand options that are out there. She did share with us a scorecard that, that comes from one of the technical colleges that works with their schools as far as if you, you have your core subjects and all the requirements for graduation, but you could do an equivalency for one for, you know, to check off that one. You could do a work-based component, traditional schooling for this. And then the, the scorecard or the, the report card eventually, you know, it's equivalency in all the different areas. And then should the board want to accept that or approve that, that could be an alternative pathway to graduation. So looking at some of those options, I think if we think back to our own schooling, there's, there's always been a handful of students that didn't fit in traditional education. I hate, I, I always do this and I don't mean any disrespect to the English teachers of the world, but if you have a senior that is hands-on, loves woodworking, wants to go be a carpenter or a tradesman or something, and they're in senior level poetry, usually their engagement's a little bit lower and they usually become a discipline problem. They don't turn into work. They might become a truancy problem, all because they don't see relevance. By having an alternative pathway, they might engage or could engage with job skills. And now you have protective members of society instead of a potential dropout of school. And to not have a dropout benefits the school and the student. So we're investigating options. That's what we're.
And I get that totally because I'm in construction, but you know, the English part of it, not the poetry, but set structure, you know, be able to, eventually you become a foreman. Eventually you have to take control of a project and, you know, there's communication and emails. So you don't look too foolish when you're sending all this stuff out. So yeah, I mean, that's, it is important, but.
And again, we're just investigating other options as we see some, some students that are severely deficient after our COVID. They're not going to graduate with their cohort. I mean, already you can tell they're not going to do it. So is there a way that, in, in traditional approach, be, okay, let's put them on Odyssey where they can catch up on credit recovery? Okay, you have a non-engaged student that's not self-motivated. You're going to put them in a little room by themselves on a computer. Not a great solution.
And by not having a diploma, it's going to hurt even worse. It's going to hurt more in the future. Not getting a job, a better job.
Correct. And all the options that, that were covered in that Zoom meeting with DPI, all of the options equated to the student being, having a high school diploma, being ready to enter into a tech school or college, being ready for the world to work and just finding it be alternative means. So again, that might be coming, you know, later on in the year as far as when we have an official proposal, but I just want the board to know that we are investigating some of those graduation options. Next one is strategic planning dates. When I first came in, we asked about strategic planning. I've been used to a three-day type or three-evening type of approach. And we basically worked through a community conversation focusing on the past, the present, and the future. Ideally, we would ask that community members, staff members, board members, administrators, business owners, parents, high school students, anybody that wants to be a part of that would attend all three meetings. It doesn't mean a whole lot when you come to the last one without having an understanding of the process from, from the first two meetings. So I guess I'm looking for guidance from the board. I've, I've seen this done on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday in the same week. And normally you start at six o'clock and you work until you're done, which could be eight-thirty, nine o'clock, could be nine-thirty, ten o'clock. And three days in a row of late nights is sometimes a big ask, but I've seen that done. I've also seen it done where you do three weeks in a row. So every Tuesday night for three weeks in a row, we invite people in and we, and we work through the process. If the board's comfortable with me leading that process as kind of a new person, neutral to the area, I've done that before. I've led that process. And basically the end result, we go through kind of a group nominal process where we dial into the specific themes or areas of importance that our community looks at. And usually that's between three to seven major themes. And if I think of, you know, one of the big government buildings with the big white pillars out, out the front, those themes become the pillars to our strategic plan. And so that's a process that we go through and involve the community so that we understand what everybody's thoughts are for our school. You pick a date like twenty thirty-five and that's where we, we envisage, okay, twelve, thirteen years, where do we want our school to be? And it's a process that we go through to get to that. Then after that, it's really up to the board administration and the school district staff to come up with the roadmap to get to those desired outcomes. So. Question about format? Any guidance the board wants to provide as far as timing? Three days in a row, three weeks in a row, Christmas, spring break, dish timeframe, right now?
So what, what, what is your idea as far as when you were thinking of doing it? Or do we wait till the beginning of the new year and start in January and go two, three Tuesdays in a row in January? Because I'm sure most people, I'm, I'm looking at my calendar up and, I mean, I'm pretty much booked until December with just different things. Yeah, man.
Thought you were retired, boy.
I am retired, but you know, I have other things to do. But I mean, that's just.
The, the best time that I've found is, is when we first come back to school because everybody's in a positive mood. They're super excited that school's back in session. And parents and community members are like, yep, it's school time. And it's fresh in everybody's mind. That window's closed.
Yes.
So the, the next best time that, that, that I can see, it's usually not the end of January, February, because everybody's kind of burnt out from the holidays. And then we get to those buldrons that we, you know, from a school standpoint, February's a long month, even though it's a short month. And then we hit spring break. So I would argue that, you know, from what I understand, strategic planning has not been done for quite some time. So if we wait a few more months, it's probably not going to hurt. But if we come back after spring break and people are pretty excited about springtime and warmer weather, that also means they're kind of busy. So I don't know about participation rates. But that, that to me is when would be the second good time to do it would be when you hit that, right after spring break time.
I don't think after spring break, then you have like baseball and T-ball and all of that.
There's always going to be something.
Well, I know, but I guess it's just to me, January's.
I agree. I mean, I think that's the time of year to do it. If we can't do it at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the spring is time people are, you're in that lull from, you know, April, can't go outside and do yard work yet. You know, it's kind of whatever.
And we can do it just prior to spring break too, end of February, end of March.
That's where I think I would like to.
Because then after spring break, everybody does become pretty busy.
And I, I would see it as like, like several weeks in a row, three weeks in a row instead of doing it three nights in a week. Just as I think people just, three late nights in a row, you know, a lot of people just can't do it with their schedules.
Well, I'll do this. While I work on some dates and times, some days of the week, leading into that spring break, three weeks, consecutive weeks, and then I'll have some closed dates. And then we can say, yes, this works. So nope, option B doesn't work. C might work, but you know, D is the best. A, absolutely not. And we'll just fill in with multiple options. I'll, I'll present that next week, or next week, next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Anybody else have any suggestions by him or?
All right, the next on the agenda is the health insurance update. I attended a marathon county special ed meeting last week and that is our insurance consortium. And we're not up for renewal coming up this year, but next year will be in our renewal year. So we have a year and a half left on this health insurance. Right now, it was interesting for me to learn that Ascension and Aspirus are kind of at odds right now. The way it was presented to me, Aspirus is looking for a twenty percent increase in, in their, in their payments. And Ascension's like, that's crazy. We're not going to do that. And then the Aspires people have said, okay, then we don't need you. But that's, the way it was presented to me was like forty percent of their business. So I don't know how that all works. What I do know is when I heard twenty percent, that makes me kind of shudder because if next year's our renewal year and it's similar, then are we looking at a twenty percent increase in health insurance? That's a big number. So that, I will keep an eye on that. I'll keep my ear to the ground. And that's a continual question that we, we start to ask because right now we're looking, we could be looking next year, and again, we're not in a renewal year, but if we were, we might be looking at a twenty percent increase in insurance. Right now, their initial calculations of CPI is around eight percent in CPI. We take a look at fuel costs and electricity costs and everything else going up and up and up. And real, the reality is schools kind of operate on a fixed budget. It's kind of like the retirement status, right? We only get so much money unless we go to referendum. And so when everything keeps going up and up and up, it's, it's a bit challenging. So that's just a not really cheery, happy outlook in the future. But obviously when we get around to those times, we'll have, you know, more numbers to present and more firm numbers to present. But it was a bit concerning when I heard twenty percent increase. I'm like, wow, that's, that's a big number. So just FYI on that. And then my last one is that looking back at last year's administration report, we had a presentation of the RE, RE officers, the Roshel Education Association. So we just wanted to present this, ask Tammy Wilson for an update on, on who the members were. So we have Tammy as the president, president, and then Alex as our vice president and treasurer. Kim is our secretary this year. Sandra is our negotiation team, public relations. Aaron is negotiation team and Andy is negotiation team. Elizabeth McDonald is also part of that negotiation team. So just a presentation on the officers. And if you have any questions, I'm sure that we'll get to negotiations in the future and, and we'll be able to communicate with them. But thank you for being here tonight. And that's just a presentation of the officers for the Roshel Education Association. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mary, fine. Elementary, principal report?
So October is typically when we give behavior updates. We've been asked in previous years to give behavior updates. We've had no major office referrals in Little People Land. That doesn't mean that we don't have minor office referrals. We are working on appropriate language with a certain little guy. And then that's really a big one. It's appropriate language with a certain little guy. Otherwise, we've been doing pretty well here. We also typically do the annual bullying report. In October, we didn't have any cases of bullying that ended up rising to the occasion of being in the skyward. That doesn't mean we don't have mean moments. And we're really working with kids and parents to understand a mean moment versus true bullying. And that's something that I think Siri's been doing an amazing job at, especially because when your feelings are hurt, you know, I think adults throw the word bullying around a lot. And so kids think, well, just because you hurt my feelings or you don't want to play with me, you're bullying me. It's not. That's a mean moment. So obviously, you know, we have our social emotional curriculum, second step. We do have zones of intervention. We use our positive behavioral interventions that supports our golden tickets. So you'll see me, Dennis, some yesterday, I said, yes, you pay me to play sorry with the kids. Because they use their golden tickets to buy Klein time, which is their lunch and recess. They're not missing any class time, but they, kids want to buy my chair and play games and go for power walks. And so a lot of the things that students are choosing are free to us. Things like stuffed, bringing stuffed animals and picking the brain break that they do in class, not having to wear their shoes for the day. They still have to wear them outside, but inside they can wear just, you know, stinky sock day. Any questions about behavior or our annual bullying report?
Okay. Thanks, Mary. All right. Second ed principal report, Mr. Doby.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'll move on to my behavior update first. I looked at September, always the first month. In high school, we had twenty-eight occurrences of write-ups of my majors. Seven of those students out of the twenty-three students, seven were for retardies. So this is down from last year, which I'm happy about. I think we had, I, I didn't get the numbers exactly from last year, but it was in the closest quarter. So if you notice, you know, I, I broke it down by, by class as well. So I, you know, I'm encouraged by the numbers there. Middle school, if you see there, we had three occurrences and two retardies. So our middle school, we, right now, there is, you know, majors being written. Kids are behaving pretty well. It's a good group. I like it. And I'm, I'm happy with both groups here. All right. Also, next up would be the annual bullying report. In the high school, middle school, we also had zero instances of reported bullying. Like, like Mary said, we have our teasing, we have our picking on. But again, bullying's repeated offenses over and over where it causes feelings of not feeling safe at school and, and, you know, not wanting to come. So if we haven't had any of those, where I've had students not do that from last year. So that's good. We're continuing to work with a lot of things Mary said. We're doing our safe school ambassadors again. We just had our, our training this week for our new, new members. We have an exciting group coming in. I love it. A lot of younger kids, which I'm happy about. So they can learn how they can help the school be a safe school for everyone. So really happy with that. And also our second step curriculum, we do middle school. We're still using that to, to work on. All right. Next up, I have the Irving update. So every year I give the number of students in classes we offer through Irving. It's very typical, right around forty-three. I think last year was around the students. So we have animal science. That's our in-house class taught by Ms. Lampy. Eleven students are involved in that through our school. Assistant childcare, we have one student. Astronomy in-house, nineteen students. Really nice number there. That is taught by Ms. Plissner. Principles of business and marketing, we have one student involved in that. Psychology through Irving, we do offer the AP psych, psychology here, but we will offer it through Irving as well. And one student. We have sociology, four students. And our Spanish in-house, we have six students. That's not including the students out of our school. So there are other students from other schools that are involved in these. These are just our in-house ones.
And do you know how many, so for our classes that we're teaching, so like animal science, we have eleven of our kids.
Yeah.
Do we know how many students from other districts or other schools are attending that?
For animal science?
We have three students outside.
Okay.
Okay.
Spanish is a little bit higher because some schools don't have Spanish teachers.
Yeah.
So we have, I think it's eight to ten from other schools in Spanish. We just added two more this week. Yeah, they were trying to do independent study and it didn't work for bolder. So we added them in and had a plan to get them caught up.
And astronomy?
I think it's two.
Two, yeah.
But that's next semester, so it usually changes in church halls.
So overall, the numbers are very stable in our Irving system. And my last thing I have right here, and this is a consideration, I have two field trip requests. They're both for Ms. Lampy and FFA. Of course, actually, one is not. One is for the middle school. And that's the Discovery World trip. I go over that one too, it's B, but that's eighth grade. We did it last year. It's part of the curriculum that was written for that class to get them out and, and into these places that are like Discovery World. That's all about science and engineering. It was a great trip last year. So we're planning on doing that again on December first down Milwaukee. So yeah, we have that trip. And then the second trip is the chapter office training for FFA in Medford. And this is Friday, you leave after school.
Yep.
And then it is through Saturday, right? You stay overnight and have this training. They've done this for years. It's just an ex-op. They don't miss any school, but we want, it is a school event with our FFA kids. Any questions about those trips?
Anybody else?
And again, when it comes to, do we understand it for field trips that are over fifty miles away, we do need the board approval. So we would ask for a motion and a second to approve.
For both or the independent?
Well, we'll, we will do one at a time.
Both by our own.
Yeah. I need a motion to approve the field trip request for the FFA chapter officer training in Medford.
I'll make the motion.
James, okay? Do you second?
I'll second.
All right, Alicia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That, Mr. Carey, go to Medford and enjoy Medford. All right. They counted. I need a motion to approve the field trip request for eighth graders to go to the Discovery World in Milwaukee.
A motion.
Okay. Do you second?
Second.
Matt? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion, Carey. Enjoy Milwaukee. Might be a little bit more exciting. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doby. All right, we're now on to old business, considering the second reading and the board policy.
So the, the reason this was, was coming up is we wanted to try to, try to have specific language and clarify some things. So if we remember from last month, the, the new things or the updates would be in green and the things to be strictly would be obviously the, the red strike through. So basically when we're talking about reimbursement rates for overnight per BM meals, my understanding is that there hasn't been a, a set limit amount. So most districts would have either one of two approaches. They would have ten, ten dollars available for, for breakfast, fifteen for lunch and twenty-five for dinner. Or they would say, okay, you have fifty, fifty-five dollars for the whole day. So if somebody didn't eat breakfast or lunch, but wanted to go out to a nice place and have a really nice dinner, they could do so during their overnight professional development type conferences and, and workshops and those types of things. So again, payment for reimbursement rates for overnight per BM meals and lodging shall follow standard US GSA rate. The board shall establish mileage rates not exceeding the federal internal revenue prescribed mileage rate. And the board shall review these reimbursement rates on an annual basis. We also went in to talk a little bit more and define a little bit further about unauthorized expenses, which are included but not limited to alcohol, movies, fines if you're, if you're speeding, tips, tax, and the entertainment meals and lodging of spouses and or guests. And so we did have a conversation as the, as a director group, because right now the IRS rate is sixty-two point five cents per mile. That seems to be quite high. And then as Rachel and I have talked, our transportation budget is trending more upward than it should be at this time of year. And so one of the things that we've asked the board to consider is to, instead of paying at the rate, this policy does say that the board shall establish mileage rates not exceeding the IRS rate. And so our question and the question I have with this policy, first of all, do we want to prove as presented, that'd be fine. Normally there's something called administrative guidelines that are associated with policies. We do not have that portion of the meal of policies. However, I've started to create what I would call procedural manual or procedural guidelines. So that when we have a policy like this, we could then have, okay, this is the policy, but this is how we're going to go about administering that policy. So if we wanted to create a different reimbursement rate for mileage, we could definitely put it either A in the policy or B into that administrative guideline. One of the things that we do have in policy eighty-six hundred, and this is our transportation policy, and we did talk about this at our district staff meeting this morning, is that it, it does talk in here about, where am I looking here? Down here for school vehicle use, the primary persons who are using a school vehicle and maintaining a school vehicle fleet is to defray the reimbursement costs. However, out of our school vehicle fleet, I do understand that our, our car is a bit suspect. I did drive it to Iowa. I think it's great for running to Fercus Lumber and to maybe the store or the motor station. But if you run to Stevens Point, as Mr. Amric thought out, it might break down on you. And it might have to call somebody because it does have just under two hundred. And it might have to call somebody, because it does have just under two hundred thousand miles, it's a bit rusted out. It's a little bit wonky and shaky down the road, so I don't know that I feel comfortable sending anybody of great distances in that vehicle. Having said that, there are also people that drive sedans and cars, and if you put them in a ten passenger van, it's a minibus, basically, and you have wind shears and stuff, people are uncomfortable driving something so big. So, that really narrows it down to one of two vans. We have a minivan, that is a normal stone-go minivan, and we have our wheelchair-accessible minivan, which I took today to Bowler, and it drives fine, it's just that sometimes that's needed to transport our special needs students. So, I think the first thing that, as an administrative team and as administrator, I have to find if we want to enforce or we want people to follow the policy eighty-six hundred, we have to have reliable transportation in order to do that. So, I talked with Tom and I talked with Todd for quite a while this afternoon, and we're going to start to take some initial looks into either replacing the car with another van or something that would have some storage, like maybe like an outback or something like that, that has seating capacity but then also storage capacity. And I don't know if that's going to replace or maybe be an add-on, because the car is still great for our facilities to jump in and go down to Ferkus Lumber and come back. It's still good for that. So, I don't know, that'll be a discussion to have at time of replacement or addition to see if we want to maintain that. But, going back to the policy, we would ask that our teachers check with Tricia to see if we have a vehicle available and then take that vehicle. Secondly, if there, sometimes, you know, if I'm going to a conference in a one-day workshop in Green Bay and I live in Wittenburg, I'm not going to come to school to pick up the vehicle to go that way, alright? That's an hour on the road, that's unnecessary. But we would ask our staff to fill up in the morning and then go to Green Bay, come back, fill up at night, and then we'll pay that actual use of that, of the fuel for their vehicle. Some people say, okay, what about brakes and shocks and oil changes and all other stuff that, you know, is going to be on my personal vehicle? And I think with the government rate, that's partly the reason that it's up there. But, if you think of a hundred-mile trip, sixty-two point five cents is sixty-two fifty. If I have an average vehicle that, and I consider average to be about twenty miles a gallon, okay, you use twenty miles a gallon, you use five gallons of gas, even at four dollars, you're talking, you know, five gallons of gas for four dollars, that's a twenty-dollar reimbursement rate, and we're going to be paying sixty-two fifty. That seems a little bit excess, because I don't know that you have in a hundred-mile trip forty-two fifty worth of shocks and brakes and tires and windshield washer fluid and whatever else you can work into that. So, looking for, going back to thirty-four forty and forty-four forty, again, thirty, the three thousands are our professional staff, the four thousands are support staff. So, when we take a look at these adjustments, we would be looking for an approval of the policy. And then, ideally, it would be, I think it would be simpler if we would move the mileage reimbursement to an administrative guideline and bring that administrative guideline back and have the board approve that administrative guideline or that procedural guideline. Open to questions? And I'll also open up forty-four hundred. And this is exactly the same, it's just for support staff versus professional staff.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't, I like your idea.
Which idea is that, James?
Well, to make a guideline for it and stuff, so, because it is expensive and we've got a budget, we've got to maintain it. Not that we don't want to take care of our employees and treat them well, but then again, we have other, we have a lot of other costs that are coming up with transportation, it's part of the bus. So, we can find something, we can talk to the teachers and see where they think the rate should be at, you know, where it's not excessive, but yet we're taking care of them. See how they feel about it.
So, I guess what I need now is, do we consider the second reading of the policy proposed changes for thirty-four forty? Is there a motion for that? Does anybody want to make a motion on that, or do you want to table it, or what would you like to do, guys?
It really depends if you want to incorporate a mileage into the actual policy, or if you want to have an administrative guideline. Because if we're going to incorporate something into the policy, that's fine. I would then go back and try to understand where that line is. And then, you know, instead of writing it in as a dollar amount, I would write it in as a third of the internal revenue rate or a half of the internal revenue rate, three-quarters of the internal revenue rate. Because that way, next year, when the internal revenue rate goes to seventy-four fifty or seventy, you know, seventy-four and a half cents, we don't have to revisit this policy, we're going to double-check on the rate every year, but we don't have to then go in and say, instead of sixty or thirty-one point two-five cents, now we've got to adjust it to be forty-one point two-five cents.
So, maybe do we table these two policies and wait for Dennis to come back with administrative guidelines and then see how that fits into those two changes and what needs to be done, or just that's a thought, another thought process?
I like that idea.
Okay.
I like, come up with some.
So, can, would, I would have a motion to maybe table this until next meetings where the administrative guidelines can be put into force and we can go from there?
How do you come on?
That's right.
Okay, so, okay, so then of course, do I make a motion on that?
You don't have to, if there's not a motion to approve or deny, then there's no action.
So, let's go with the guidelines, we'll come back next month with guidelines, and then we'll revisit these two proposals at that time and see where we are.
And that'll give me time to work with our admin team and Rachel and come up with something that we think is appropriate. Then I can give that to Tandy, Tandy can then figure it out through our staff and see, does this make sense? Is this, is this in the ballpark, we've worked that out?
I like that idea. It goes by the other state also.
Okay. Alright, well, let's then move on to considering revision of board policy fifty-eight thirty, student fundraising.
So, again, this policy has come about because last month, opening the discussion about whether or not all fundraisers have to come before the board for approval, and our policy right now, fifty-eight thirty, does show that fundraising organizations or fundraising by approved school organizations that are managed by the district can be permitted by the principal, and that fundraising off school grounds may be permitted by me. There was a question about outside entities coming in, and that would be, what I did is I went through and took a look at all the different, I did a search for anything that was fundraising, money, fundraisers, anything that would come up. And so, we have a couple other policies that are around this area. The first one is crowdfunding. This is the sixty-six oh five, and basically, you, this is when hypothetically speaking, a teacher says, hey, I want to use a GoFundMe page to fund some project that I want to do in my classroom. That's a crowdfunding. Or, if we have some outside entity that has online resources that we could, like, we could put things out there and try to raise money for school purposes. This is the policy that would center on that type of fundraising. We do have a wellness policy, I don't know, is there fundraising component? I can't remember why this one isn't in here.
Because of the food. Yeah, it has to do with the food.
Oh, that's right, because it was fundraising, because it has to meet the wellness policy, but every entity can have two fundraisers a year that do not meet this. So, I wanted to include the wellness policy so the board was aware of what that was. And then I think this is the one that I think had the biggest question mark. What about if we have advertised commercial activities by outside people? So, hypothetically speaking, you know, Marshfield Clinic wanted to come in and sell a product or advertise or do something in the school, this is where that would have to come to the board, to have the outside entity to come in that wanted to have a captive audience, our students sell an outside product to our students specifically. If somebody wanted, if there was some construction company that said, hey, we'd really like to put a turf field in your football field, and we'll actually donate our advertising or we'll pay you to advertise our logo on your football field, but then in turn we'll give, we're trying to get your business. And so, that's something that would also need to come to the board to kind of net through those types of donations or advertising dollars. So, I guess the question is, going back to the original fifty-eight thirty, this is what our, my, I just don't, I don't sit there. The policy does say that right now fundraising by on-school or school-proved organizations is permitted by the principal, and if they're selling those things off grounds, it can be approved by the district administrator. I don't have any proposed changes, because that's the policy as it states, and I think that policy's good. But there seem to be some questions about if everything had to come to the board, and our policy clearly says no. So, I guess I'll open for questions or discussion.
So, where does the policy come if, say, it's like the Booster Club and they're running a fundraiser? Do they need to come to the board for that, or is that just something that goes to the principal's administration? Because I know that's a question that the Booster Club had the last time I was at a meeting.
Are they considered a commercial entity? They're nonprofit, right?
They're nonprofit, and they're not technically part of the school.
Correct.
Because they're the community.
So, that'd have to come to the board then?
I would argue that that, because it's not a school-sponsored activity, that would be a different corporation, non-for-profit corporation, but they're still, that would have to come through the board.
Okay.
And then, is there a calendar being made or in the process of being made?
Yeah, we sat down and went through all of them and put them all on the calendar, so we can kind of see where there's some overlap. It's a little bit, it's not too bad, actually.
Is there limitations then for, say, you know, okay, this group, each group is allowed to have two per year or four or whatever?
There isn't right now. A lot of the ones that are written in those folders are ongoing kind of things, so they're technically not really fundraisers, but it's throughout the year, they'll be doing something. If it was basketball, say, they're going to do a free throwathon, but it's always during this time, it's never exact times. I would probably, when we look through those, I would say there's two to four in each, and then, you know, some groups a little bit more.
And I think what I noticed, because we did it right after the last meeting when you guys asked for the calendar, is a lot, because they're written so early, it's like, we want to do a fundraiser in spring. So, I think if it didn't all have to come to the board in October, September, August, it doesn't really matter when. You know, the board always wanted it as one big package. I think we will be able to eliminate some of the overlap that we did see, because right now someone, their form literally says, in spring, we're going to do this. Well, spring is three months out of the year. Now, when it comes to the time when then they actually do it, they may only do a two-week period. But, because they had to fill it in now and they didn't want to pick exact dates, and who knows, you know, is the company going to be available at this time or that time, right? So, I think that's, there wasn't a whole lot of overlap. And again, because they are so early, it's, we want to sell candies and fruit. Or, we want to sell nuts and snacks, but they're not, you know, they're not coming with a company yet. It's more like we just want to, we have to put something down to get it approved. So, I do feel like it'll end up being less overlap and less ambiguous if it can come in when it comes in, rather than... You know, maybe somebody could come and say, hey, I want to do something in spring, what are other people doing in spring? And we've got that calendar already met for the people who already know, Catherine knows. Fruit comes up in November to be picked up in December. You know, so hers will be on the calendar right away, because it's always the same fundraiser and it's always the same three-and-a-half week period.
And I guess I have a question then too, because I've floated the idea that instead of waiting till the school year begins, is that we, in May, come up with a calendar or at least a menu, just a one-page document with all the different fundraisers that are going on, and we could have five, six different entities that say spring. Okay, the board would then see that litany and say, okay, board could then provide guidance and say, with these six spring fundraisers, make sure that only two at a time are running, you know, so that way there would be some guidance for the board level for us to then administer to say, okay, we know that as we get to spring, whenever these are running, we can only have two going at the same time. And that would be good guidance. And then, we, I think, incorrectly from wrong, but if we could put together something that would be in vague terms, general terms, we could develop that list at the end of the school year, present it to the board in June, and then say, okay, here's what we're looking at for next year for fundraisers. That doesn't rule out the, what I would call the fundraisers are targets of opportunity, because as a DECA advisor, I remember the first year I got a call and they said, hey, would you be willing to have your DECA students work for, in volunteer time, to score our karate tournament? It was held right in the high school gym, they taped off and had like little squares of combat area and fighting area, rings, if you will. And then at the end of it, unbeknownst to us, the gentleman cut us a three-hundred-dollar check and said, thank you for your time. And we're like, oh, we didn't, we weren't expecting that. It was a donation kind of, because we volunteered our time, but then we deposited. So, it wasn't necessarily a fundraiser that we think of where I'm carrying a box of candy bars and we're going out innovating all the different community members. Or, we have, what my DECA group used to do too, we had a brochure sale, which was the Christmas treats, the nuts, the wrapping paper, the, all that type of thing. That would be one that would appear on our list if somebody was just going to do that. But those targets of opportunity or donations, those impromptu things, those aren't necessarily planned nor would they be planable, unless you knew that, okay, next year they invited us back early and now we're... But that's not necessarily innovating our community either.
I guess my thoughts are, I just don't want to have one group have more, you know what I mean? I want everyone to have equal opportunity at fundraising to make sure that whoever it is, you know, this group has five and all of a sudden this one has one, because if they take a second one, they're overlapping with the group that has five. Well, that's not, that's not fair, you know? I mean, like the concession stand, I don't know who runs the concession stand for football games.
I think it's Stingers.
That's a few years ago?
Yeah.
I mean, I know like Wittenburg School, they give each group an opportunity, you can run it for two games. Whether it's varsity, you know, like, here's two games, get your volunteers, here's your moneymaker, you know? Stuff like that, it's just giving everybody an equal chance to get your volunteers to come there, spend a couple hours, make money.
They could use this widget, didn't they?
Because, I don't know how many years ago.
I don't know, for this thing, if they donate a lot of that faculty.
For a long time, yes, but it used to be the trap, they used to be, but I don't think they can get people to come.
Well, and that's, yes, so, my understanding is that they were having a difficulty finding people to come in and volunteer or groups that wanted to take a day, because you need so many people, that Stingers, that Stingers was given the offer of, you know, this is your moneymaker if you want it, and they've embraced that, because then Stingers is free to our students. Well, I mean, not just our students, but the branchal community, kids do not pay for Stingers, they don't pay for their uniforms and whatnot.
And then, Mary, don't, the Stingers like, sometimes they'll ask, like, did they put the PA system in? Or things like that down the field or what?
Yeah, they've done.
They'll donate things too.
Right.
Yeah. So, it goes around and comes around.
Right.
But I know what you're saying, that if one, if you get some, you know, if you got a very coach that's going to, you know, or somebody that just loves to do fundraisers, they're going to try to do a lot of them.
But we could also have an administrative guideline that says your group can only have three or two.
Right.
Right? Because we do have, I mean, we sat down and we made a list of all the groups as well. And, you know, a lot of our groups are limiting themselves to two fundraisers, unless they're fundraising for something very specific. So, you know, like student council, they do one, they do the haunted hustle for the bad, that's one of their two fundraisers.
Well, along those lines, just to remind the board and people on attendance, that when I communicated with WIAA about the student activity funds, their guidance, or their, again, verbal guidance to me, was that if there's a specific purpose, so if the basketball team is going to fundraise for a basketball returner or something, and that thing is twenty-five hundred bucks, they do a specific fundraiser for that, they raise four thousand dollars, they can buy that with that fundraising money for twenty-five hundred dollars, that goes through our school accounting process, and then the other fifteen hundred dollars is up for that organization then to either save... And then the other $1,500 is up for that organization then to either save or do something with it. They could then donate it to a Booster Club entity and the Booster Club could then earmark and say, "Okay, this is $1,500 for basketball." So that way if there's needs that a basketball has that, that wouldn't go through our channels here, they could go, "Hey Booster Club, would you be willing to pay for $800 of X, Y, and Z?" And the Booster Club could say, "Here and there." But if that money's already been, again, what kind of what Mary just said, it goes around, comes around. If I'm gonna be a basketball coach and donate to the Booster Club, I would hope that they would consider my request for money then later on. And that is something that WI, that, that seems to be kind of their, their workaround to that issue. So that it doesn't necessarily all have to be sitting in our student activities fund. I guess my recommendation to the board with this is to leave the policy as is and then when we get to next spring, administration will come up with that list or menu and present that to the board in June. And then that way we can take a look at all the fundraisers that are proposed for next year and a general timeframe. It might not be from, you know, March 15th through, you know, April 1st, but it would be spring-ish timeframe. And then it would be administrative guideline to make sure that we don't have more than two at a time. Make sure that no one entity is monopolizing on all the fundraising opportunities.
So do we wanna keep the motion as is? Cause we only have to change, make a motion if we're gonna change the balance.
Correct.
Do you wanna change anything now guys? Or are we gonna do this? And see what comes?
Leave it.
Okay. All right. Well, we can just move on then. All right. The NFHS camera and game broadcast system.
So last time I talked about NFHS and I, this is basically where NFHS is a system that is partnered with WIAA. And they will install free of charge two cameras, up to two cameras, if we want a third or fourth for a different location. There's some requirements there. You have to have direct line of sight to a wireless internet somehow, point-to-point system. And we would have to buy additional cameras. But the first two, which normally would be on a, on a football field and/or the main competition gym, would be free for us. And then NFHS, they would do the installation, they do upkeep, they would work with our tech person to make, to, to make sure that everything, that we had the correct technology involved to do that. And then basically, it would be a pixel camera that would be established and then we would, we would have to manage the software to tell the system when to turn on, when to turn off, because it wouldn't be something where they, all of a sudden they're watching our elementary kids, you know, play volleyball or pickleball or dodgeball, whatever it might be, in the gymnasium. As a result, it's free for us because then on the backside, anybody that wants to use NFHS system and watch a game, they would then, they would pay a per-month fee or an annual fee. I believe it's $13 a month or an annual price of like $75. So there's a discount then, pretty good discount for annual fee. But then again, if you've only got a basketball player, only have a volleyball player, do you really wanna watch? Maybe you do, maybe you don't. Depends how invested you are in the school. Question, good timing. The, the contrary to that would be a huddle system. And so the huddle system, and there was, it seemed like there was some board interest in huddle because huddle is where we would buy the equipment. And then it would be free for all the people that wanted to watch it. And so I did ask Rachel to reach out to our auditor because there is something called Fund 80. Fund 80 is something that is a community activities fund that is outside of our revenue limit that we can levy for something like this. We wanted to check to see if this was a community expenditure that we could then put into Fund 80. The auditor came back and said, "Absolutely it is, because if it's free for all community members, not just the Rochelle students, that can be used for Fund 80." So talking with the huddle people, we currently spend about $2,500, is that correct, Aaron? About $2,500 for our coaches' huddle because that's what they use to record and send game film to other coaches. And so we, we already have a subscription for some of the, some of the sports. The price tag of $8,000, which would include that coaches' portion, and talked with the salesperson, they said, "If you wanna run it for this year, and I know the fall sport's already over, but the annual fee would only be $5,500 because you've already purchased the 2,500, so give us another $5,500 and we'll get the cameras out to you and set it up and we'll get good to go." We buy the equipment, we would have to, they would come in and put the camera up, but we'd have to put them, I only played up circus stories, would have to drill into a wall and do whatever. Same thing, we would buy, for that $8,000, you have two cameras. It has to have either line of point-to-point wireless or hardware connection. But the reality is that we could then provide that for free to the rest of our people. By spending or by putting it into Fund 80, if we decide to do that, we did the calculation, Rachel, I think if, correct nothing wrong, but it ended up being a penny per thousand for our taxpayers. Meaning that if you have a $400,000 house, if I do my math right, it would be what, 40 bucks?
Forty bucks.
But that'd be a free service then, for everybody. If you have a $100,000 house, it'd be $10 on your tax bill if we went with the Fund 80. So it doesn't, it'd definitely be cheaper, but it's a shared cost then and it's a, it's a public service. And that's why we could put it in that community fund. So, again, it's the question mark of, A, do we wanna buy this so it's free for everybody? And then if we do, do we wanna put it into Fund 80 so that it comes out of our Fund 10 and is not considered an expense to our revenue limit, but it's an expense that comes from our community fund? We currently do not have a Fund 80, but this, many times districts use the Fund 80 to provide community education, to provide free viewing, to provide some of those things that are going to be community-wide and that then is, is a service. And I thought that was a good thing that our auditor came back and said, "Yep, it would be a Fund 80 purchase. It would be Fund 80 quotable, so that way it'd be outside of a revenue limit."
How long of a contract do we have to deal with?
There is, there is no contract, I found out.
Oh, no.
But what happens is just like with everything else, there's inflation. If we wanted, we could lock in for up to three years at eight grand. And then after that, it might go to 10 grand. I, we don't know. If you wanted to lock in for a year, okay, we get a year, $8,000, and then next year might be 10 grand. So it's really depending on where we wanna lock in, but it would be an annual, an annual fee of $8,000 each year. We're already spending $2,500 at this point for what we currently use huddle for, so it's basically an addition of $5,500. And then if, and then by incorporating that together now because it's now community, the $2,500 that we're spending now could be incorporated into the community fund of Fund 80.
So we would just have two cameras? We would just have one, like football field and one in the gym? There's no possibility of having one softball diamond, baseball diamond? Anything along those lines?
Softball is probably more possible because I don't know the internet connectivity at the baseball.
There's wifi at the baseball diamond.
There's the possibility then. We'd have to, we'd have to purchase extra cameras. Cause the $8,000 comes with the two-camera system, similar to NFHS. But it's a possibility. I, that I don't know.
And then if the WI is working with NFHS, what happens if the WI basically says, "Okay, NFHS is now going to all the schools under WI and we have huddle. Are we out $8,000 a year then? Cause we're basically everyone on the opposite way."
NFHS has already partnered with WI because again, WI wants the cut. And I'm sure that as NFHS gets more and more students or more and more districts, there, there is a percentage, so in both cases, to re-step a little bit, with NFHS, the annual, the annual fee or the monthly fee, there is a kickback to the school depending on how much usage there is. So there is money that comes, it's a, it's a revenue stream then for the school. I have to assume that, and I haven't been through this, but I have to assume that during WI playoff games, it would be blacked out anyway because there's ticket prices. So you would have to physically come to be that, or to be there for a playoff game because WI is gonna want their money. Now, that might be different with NFHS because they might get their kickback from NFHS then. I don't know that. With huddle, there wouldn't be, so we would more than likely have to blackout playoff games with huddle. Right now, there's, you could do the Facebook Live, you could do YouTube like we're doing here, you could do NFHS, you could do huddle. I don't know about the future. I don't know if there's an exclusive contract. I think that would go against local control on our state. There might be incentives to go with the NFHS and WI, but at this time, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. Cause I did include that spreadsheet again where everybody in our conferences, you know, it's a handful are using huddle, a handful are using NFHS, a handful are doing live, uh, live, not live, live streaming on Facebook. Facebook Live and then it's, you know, some are doing the YouTube thing. So there's not one set way to go about it. I initially came in and last month, I'm like, "Oh, let's approve NFHS." I had used it live before and it was fine. I have found out that huddle's a better camera because NFHS is just a camera that will trace with you. With huddle, their camera is more intuitive. And if you program that through volleyball, the volleyball account, their camera will go panoramic and you see the whole game at once. If you program that event through the basketball feed, that's when it'll traverse with the action. If you're wrestling, again, it goes panoramic. So it, it's, it's more intuitive than the other camera. And the fact that we could potentially fund it with Fund 80 and incorporate what we're already spending makes me, would, makes me wanna recommend huddle.
Can I add something to that? Huddle also, with that package, it's huddle assist. So with coaching, you can get all stats done for them in 24 hours and it's sent right to them. So instead of, I used it, instead of going for two and a half hours watching film on a game to do stats, I review a film in 20 minutes. And sometimes they make mistakes, but it's there. I mean, it's a powerful product. To say that way. And the coaches can use it. I mean, you can write down film right on it. It's really easy.
Pretty able to do stuff like that on NFHS? No?
That's why it says it's more intuitive, it's more powerful. And it's also then, well, depending on how you look at it. It would be free to view, but it would be, could be outside the revenue limit as part of Fund 80.
And then it's open to everybody?
Anybody that wants to join in. And talk with huddle, cause one of the concerns is like, and, and I know I've talked with R E D Steve, he's like, "Okay, have you ever talked or could you talk with the other superintendents to see if there's any interest in raising ticket prices? Cause what, what used to cost, or what used to cover the officials and the table workers and that type of thing, doesn't cover that anymore." And you could argue that there's, if you have a good team, the gym is gonna be packed. And if you're not a very good team, the gym's not gonna be packed. And so there's more revenue there. But again, when it, when I asked the question, because I said, "Okay, if we go to this system, huddle or something else, and we're showing now all these, these games for free, are we going to have any game fans in the stands, right? Is there going to be an audience?" They, the, the person, of course, this is the huddle person, this isn't me, but the huddle person said, "Over 90% of the people that use huddle are not people within 30 miles." It is the people, the grandparents that are in Madison or living, you know, outside of the central Wisconsin area. Those people at Snowbird left and right, those people, those parents that are on vacation or if not on vacation, maybe I should say they're on work-related business and they can't get back for the game. They can still tune in on their phone. They can still see their sons and daughters play. And it's, it's kind of a nice option for them. I, I personally have an account with Live Barn. Live Barn is specific to hockey. And many places now have Live Barn where, again, it just kind of traverses left and right. It's not a great system, but at least I could see my daughter play when I'm not, if not in person. And it's a nice option. And that's similar to NFHS where I pay an annual fee of whatever to, to see this. And then it's Pittsburgh, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, you know, multiple places have that. Which multiple places have huddle. The other nice thing is that anybody that has huddle, I'm talking with the salesperson, anybody that, any school that's using huddle right now, virtually everybody in the state has it for free. You could charge people to get the login for it. Right now, every school that huddle works with, according to the salesperson, those schools are allowing it to be free for their users, which means that if we play a game in Iola, and Iola has huddle, anybody that is in our community can watch theirs too. Cause now we're a huddle customer. Anybody, if you, if we have a volleyball playoff game, we have to go over to Green Bay, you know, if we, sectional final. Depending the whole WI blackout thing, could you watch that? If we go to a tournament, you know, if the basketball team has a, a Christmas break tournament and they go to Oshkosh, if they have huddle, we could watch that whole tournament from our living room. So that's another, it's not just our sports, it's anybody that has a huddle system, which is similar to NFHS. So when I, when I learned more about the huddle system and knowing that we can now use Fund 80 to fund that, I would recommend the huddle system if we wanna go into the broadcast business and broadcast our games to our, our public.
Do you have any idea of how many people we get to look at our broadcasts, what we have put out there so far?
Based back, Facebook stats? I don't have them.
You know, I mean, just to see.
Facebook is not allowed.
To me, if it's worth it, you know, and we're talking $8,000 a year for the next three years and you spend $24,000 on someone watching a game, that's a lot of money when you're talking budgets.
Yeah.
This would be levy though if it's $20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I think your number is wrong. $400,000, it would be $4.
Oh, they hit it wrong. I had an extra zero.
So it's a lot less.
Like I said, it'd be $400,000 house, you're gonna spend $4.
Well, you wouldn't even barely see that.
No, I mean, because it's spread out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I mean, if we're getting 10 people to watch it on YouTube, right now we're reviewing, is it worth the spend, back-up the money on it? Yes, it's from different funding, but...
But at the same time, there are a lot of people know that it's even out there, like elderly people and relatives, you know, that we actually have something like that. Have a good program, so.
And if, and if, that would be part of that dissemination information. So you talk to the coaches and the coaches would know that it's there because they would be using it as well. We inform them, they can tell all their players, their parents, can tell their extended families. We can post it on our Facebook page. Watch tonight, you know, those types of things.
So if we got NFHS, would we still have to do huddle for the coaches then still?
Yes.
We still would?
We'd still be spending the $2,500, yeah.
Which is the basic package, it doesn't?
No stats, no, it's just.
Insights, um... 15,145 people have looked at our page since we started it, which is a lot. Content-wise, this regional volleyball game event that we have is our one, two, three, fourth highest viewed thing. 1,400 people have reached, it's reached 1,400 people already. And that's the one that we just had.
There was 1,400 people watching it as it was going on?
No, there were 1,400 people who saw that event on there. I'm looking specifically for videos.
Which?
For game, for a game.
I've logged into the games and I've seen about 17 or 18.
That's what I thought, maybe like 15 to 20 people.
That I agree, like if we log in too. I think about like my parents or relatives too that my parents are so good about going on Facebook and being able to find the game and log into it. If they had something like this, they'd use it.
Yeah. So our volleyball. We had a bunch of different videos. 258 people saw. Now, were they watching it when it was happening? But 258 people saw one of them. 346 people saw the next one. 334 saw the, saw a different one. 350, 228. The JV volleyball versus Iola, 257.
And there could be people going back, clicking on it, watching it posted and all. The players might go back and watch.
Yeah, are they sitting? But then we have a JV volleyball versus Tri County, 44. So, but then the varsity volleyball versus Tri County, 276. So it probably depends on, right, like my kid was in it, I shared it out, then my friends saw it, my friends might've clicked on it for a second. Are they sitting and watching the game? There's, yeah.
And if we do it, does it, we have to keep it forever?
Aaron, you know, sorry, do you know, it shows live, does it also then archive? So similar to Facebook Live where it's, it's there, so then people could go back and watch it. So coaches could use it for coaching, players could go back and analyze their own play.
Exactly.
Grandpas could watch it the next day because they fell asleep.
They could call it and tell them what to do.
So we love the game, it's really not going against our budget, just, we're just spreading it out to.
We should actually come out ahead money because we're not paying the 2,500.
Technically from a front end expenditure.
Is that 2,500 for just one sport, basketball or is that?
That's all the ones.
That was annual.
Football, volleyball, basketball, both basketballs.
Both basketball, okay.
And so because that's part of the package, that 2,500 goes out of front end into front 80, which, again, according to my mathematician, if you have 100,000 a house, it's going to cost you a dollar.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
It just, you know what I mean, to me, it just thinks that if you're, you're able to do a couple of sports, you wish you could do all of them.
Well, I.
And we can investigate that. And I and I agree, it seems to be unfair for those sports.
Especially baseball. Through Huddle, each camera's $3,000.
So.
Extra.
That would be a one-time $6,000 investment that could also then go to front 80, but I don't know that we would be able to work that into front 80 this year.
And Matt, I'll tell you, I worked in other districts where Huddle's huge in all the schools in those districts. No one does baseball or softball. It's the inside sports and football. They, uh, soccer, they also, they offer soccer, they have their team. Again, that's on football.
And you could also potentially turn it on for track.
You could, yeah.
But.
But we don't have to, I mean.
But it would just be a panoramic.
It'd be really hard to.
It'd be very hard.
Unless you have a finish line or something like that or.
There's so many things going on.
I just know like baseball and softball, to me, when you think of it, that's when you get your team to travel and that's when you get a lot of people that want to view it and see it. That's.
No, I get it.
Looking at that, that point of it.
Well, I, maybe we could do it and then just see how it goes the first year and then maybe purchase a camera for baseball diamond, or even maybe they, somebody else will want to purchase, you know, if we have it, you know, there's a booster coming in there, you know.
Maybe they put a Wi-Fi server right in there, it's the end.
Yeah.
They have it because they have a camera in their school.
Yeah, they have a camera in there, they can't see much by themselves. So I guess while we, while we need to decide whether we're going to have a motion to purchase Huddle and go with this for three years and then I think the smart thing to do would be to go for three years versus one year because that way, but then after three years, we can always revisit it and decide, do we want to levy that with the taxpayers again? Because maybe they won't want to do it. And if we don't get a lot of, um, tax, you know, people watching it, then we can stop it after three years.
I agree. I agree. I think it's worth a try.
Okay, so.
What do you think?
Yes, no?
I'll make the motion to approve it for three years.
I'll second it.
Anybody have any further discussions? All right, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Wonder if they would give us a deal on our extra cameras.
Aaron, Aaron, I can can try to smooth, but.
I mean.
Take them out to dinner.
Maybe two for the price, I mean, two for the price of one or something, I don't know. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Correct.
And always just say.
That's right. Okay, well, let's move on because. I want to go home. All right. The, we consider the ECCP student courses.
Yes, so.
I'll have to turn this over to Colvin.
Okay, Colvin.
Does, uh, anyone have any questions on what ECCP or Start College Now is?
What is, well, I just want to know what ECCP.
Sorry, ECCP is a early college credit program.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So we had three people sign up for ECCP, so if all three of those students took three courses, um, that would put us at $3,037.50. Um, we only had two students sign up for Start College Now. One student only signed up for one class. Another one signed up for, I think, four classes? So if that one student took three classes and the one took the one that they signed up for, it would be at $2,584.90, putting us at a total of $5,622.40 for the spring semester. So any questions on those numbers?
And Colvin, you just have a a brief history of the program?
Oh, what was?
As far as ECCP, you have like a historical perspective, like what is it meant to do for sure?
Yeah, so I mean, they're 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 both programs that are, that allow our students or students of Wisconsin to take college classes at the cost of the school district in the state, um, and where the large discount on their families. So, um, with the ECCP program, uh, if we do not offer a class that, um, they want to take through the college program, the university, so that's, I'm sorry, I should start with that. ECCP is for the universities, Start College Now is for the tech schools. So, yeah, if we, if they want to take a class that we do not offer here at school, meaning we do not, the course descriptions don't match about 80%, uh, then we would pay 75% of that course fee, like with the state reimbursing us 25% of it. Uh, for Start College Now, we pay 100% of that because they're just lower cost than what universities are. It used to be, I forget what it used to be, I guess I haven't been around for a little program, it used to be.
Youth options.
Youth options, yeah, youth options. So now it's ECCP.
And I just add to that by statute. Students are are allowed to do this by statute and school districts don't have a choice. I mean, we could say that, all right, we have a comparable course, so we're not going to approve that course. Um, and when I was in my district just north of here, we had a number of students that were signing up for, uh, medical transcription or medical terminology, something like that. And we had the, to the tune of like 60 students were going to N T C under the youth options at that time, um, to get that credit. We we had no choice. We had to pay for that. And then we were reimbursed, what is it, half of it or something, or reimbursed a quarter of it, something like that. Um, so then we, we asked our, um, face teacher to go out and become certified in medical term because she then had three sections teaching in-house. And then we no longer had that expenditure because now, okay, now we have a comparable class. If you want to take it, you pay for it yourself. But it's it's not like there's a choice unless there's a comparable class, so.
Yeah. And by law, uh, we have to pay for up to 18 of their credits if they want to take 18 credits.
And as of right now, we have no students that have reached that limit yet.
We haven't, but we're going to have one student, um, get to that. And I guess when we get to that, I would ask, because the school board can't approve of more than that. It's, we have to pay a minimum of 18 credits. So when we get to that, I would ask you, um, if that student wants to take more, if the school board would be willing to exceed that 18 credit.
I see them after rock and roll, but I mean, would that be like a music?
It's like a music history, I'm guessing. I I have not read the description of all these classes.
I would guess it's probably music appreciation 101 or something.
Yeah, I think it's like a music history.
Like you would get in college, you'd take a music appreciation class.
Yeah, so.
And for all these classes, they do meet the requirements for their liberal, for their, uh, Gen Eds?
Yeah, they're they're, what the students are doing, um, is they're trying to knock out their Gen Ed credits. So a lot of humanities, maybe some art classes, English classes that we don't offer here, social studies classes, science classes, um, stuff that you have to get in your Gen Eds. And then Start College Now, we usually see students going with like the, um, CNA program or usually some classes that are more oriented towards what their interests are.
So there is no stipulation what they choose? They can choose whatever they want?
They can choose whatever they want, um, as long as it doesn't match up to 80% of our courses here. So what I do to make sure that as I talk to the the classroom teacher or the department, um, if it's something that I'm like, oh, this seems kind of close, and then they make that decision. At the end of the day, if we denied it, uh, we have to let them know the appeal process. And then they can take that to the state superintendent and then they'd make that final decision if the student and family wanted to appeal that.
But it's not other class in other college.
No, yeah, there's only limited.
Each college has specific classes that can be taken for this program.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're not taking chemistry 400 or something like that. Like that one, that wouldn't fly. In the college level, they have to take like their, you know, 101 science, biology, 105, and then move on to the.
So it's mostly the freshman or sophomore classes?
Basically, yeah, yeah.
Basically, okay. Okay. So I would need a motion to consider the ECCP student courses. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
James, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion was carried. I need a motion for the starter college, starter, Start College Now courses.
I'll motion.
Okay, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passed. Okay, liability and property insurance renewal.
I do apologize that, uh, we did not, uh, we talked about this last week with our, um, broker and Rachel and I had some concerns or some considerations because they had come in with a total, um, assessed value of our property and equipment buildings and that type of thing. And Rachel cut up the fact that, well, you say it's like 42 million, but we just had a study done that says it's 54 million. So are we underinsured? And we don't want to be underinsured. And so, um, we asked them to consider or to to look at that and bring it back to us. So, um, basically, if I can get my, oop, this won't work. So basically, we we have two options. We have C I C and C M Regent. Um, C M Regent for many of their auto coverages uses the C I C anyway, bless you. And, um, initially, these numbers were closer, but once they valued it on on the the new, um, total value, then it came in that that C M Regent was considerably lower. Now, even having said that, initially, we were thinking, let's just go with C I C because C I C ha- carries many of those other coverages anyway. And then you have one person or one entity to talk to. But, um, our broker then came back with new numbers and the 7,000 plus dollars that the difference is, they recommend going with C M Regent, um, as far as our liability and, uh, auto coverages. So, um, this total 57,000 annual premium is still below what we paid this this current year. Um, so for whatever reason, I don't know, usually insurance doesn't go down, but I don't know if we've had a good experience when it comes to claims and and auto and whatnot, um, and with the building. So at this point in time, that is less than what we're paying currently. And I would recommend approving the C M Regent with the C I C coverages as best presented there.
So I need a motion on that. Unless I need to make a question about that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. All right, consider first reading of policy, please.
Do we want to go through each one? Normally, I'd say we should because that is a board's policy. This is, this is first reading. Um, what I would ask is that if the board could take a look at the policy update overview, that is something that I I haven't attached, uh, in previous, uh, policy updates, but if you go to this overview, and there's a whole bunch of jargon here, but then when you get down to the actual policies, it talks about, okay, policy 0100, further clarification has been added to the definition of administrator by indicating that they're employed with administrative contract. In addition, further explanation for the definition of a school official is provided by including including the previous drafting note information in the definition. These pres- uh, revisions are recommended but are not required, um, by law, but if it doesn't change the meaning that drastically, then we would recommend that we would approve those changes. So to go and take a look at those definitions then for policy 0100, again, this would be green, would be the addition, and then anything that would be red would be stricken. So again, there's a different way to to identify the Wisconsin State statutes. Those school officials have been further defined. So not a, not a ton of changes, but that's just the 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 Neola descriptor of what was being changed or why it's being changed. And then you can go to the policy and actually read what what the change is. So just to, uh, take on another one, and you'll also notice, uh, I'm going to see if I can find them here. When we go to the overview, you also notice here like for policy 1213, 3213, and 4213, again, we're talking administration, support staff, and professional staff. Policy is revised for staffing, um, posting photos of students who are, who are their own children and or relatives on social media. So that same change is, applies to all three of those because, again, the 1,000 is our administrators, 3,000 is our professional, 4,000 is our support staff. So I would ask that we review those. We don't approve them now anyway. But if you could spend some time to review those, not only the the policy update and understanding why those changes are happening, but then also go into the policy, take a look at those. And if you have any questions before next meeting, by all means, get ahold of me.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, then we will move on. All right, parent transportation request.
So this transportation request is coming to us because we do have an EC three-year-old, um, that is coming in for street services. Um, if we do a bus transportation, again, we have a minimal charge, there's the bus as opposed to this parent contract. Uh, they're not on a regular route and it's at different times. So the, again, this is, this would reimburse the parent at the the state rate. My understanding is that the parent's pretty close and the parent had stated, oh, we might just even just walk. We won't have to do anything. When it's, you know, 20 degrees outside, they're probably not going to be walking, they're going to drive. I'm bringing here, you know, it's a short distance. Um, but that would be something that would be consistent with past practice and something that we would recommend approving.
Okay, you have a motion for that or any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, ma'am, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. We're moving right along. Consider budget adjustments for the 2022, 23 school year.
So we had a a some changes to the budget, um, because if you remember back at our annual meeting, we presented the the budget and the information that we we thought we knew, the best information that we had. But then again, in October, we get our actual, um, actual numbers from the state. Uh, good news is we did receive a a bit more, um, general aid than we anticipated. So if you take a look at, um, let me see if I can find it here. I'm looking for the change. Um, Rachel, does this, does this sheet show the change from what we had last night?
It's at the top there. Um, it's going to be part of the, um, state sources 600.
Thank you. So we take a look at, um, 2021, 2122, that's what we were anticipating. And if we take a look at our budget from the 6,000, oh, I'm sorry, I meant 700 on it. My cursor is. And we take a look at the state sources, we're we're up about 400 plus thousand dollars from what was last year. And when we, when we take a look at the budget, we take a look at last year's as a guide. And so we anticipate receiving about that same amount. But when it comes in now, it has, it has gone up and we have a bit more, um, general aid. So, um, I guess open up questions on any budget revisions that you've seen or if you've reviewed these. And Rachel, I can try to answer the best we can. Otherwise, we can also take a look, because it, even though it's, it's a separate motion, it's still the same information or similar information. So I guess I wanted to present, this is for the, right, so we take a look at our revenue limit worksheet. And this is basically where we come up with our mill rate. And, um, if you take a look, we could, we could go through the whole thing line item by line item, but really, when we, when it, when we take a look at it, we're looking at, total revenue to be used for our levy is 3,957,391. Here's the 8,000 that we'd already put in in anticipation of it being outside of levy for the the, uh, um, system. So then we take a look at our our total amount to be levied, if we come up with a a mill rate of .008329, which really is a mill rate of $8.33. If we take a look at our historical perspective, last year, we were at a mill rate of nine. We've gone down to a mill rate of 833. The reason? Look at the percentage increase in our land valuation. Land values in in our school district went up by 13%. So this is a bit of a shell game because our mill rate's going down to 833, but people are probably spending more on taxes because their value went up, so percentage goes down, but my land went up, so now I pay more out of pocket, which is, that's that whole kind of, where does it come from? The good news is, the red line here is the state average. And so. And so, as of the last two years, we're, we are below state average when it comes to mill rate. So, um, I can't, I wasn't here, but I, I can't imagine two thousand nine was a, I don't know if that was a referendum year or what that was, but, um, we were at about a, it looks like we were at about eleven four, for eleven dollars and forty cents mill rate, and the state average was considerably lower, at about, you know, nine point two. And so when people get, when taxpayers get that information, they're like, what the heck's this school doing? They're not very happy about that. So, um, subject to any questions, but what I would be, what I would entertain is a motion to approve the budget adjustments, and then a separate motion to approve the official mill rate for this year of eight point three three.
Well, first I need a motion for the adjustments to the budget.
I want a motion.
James, second?
I'll second.
Hey Matt? And so we will call for that. So ma'am?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
James?
Yes.
Lee? Carla? Yeah. All right, so we have four?
Four.
Four, four. Okay, motion's carried. All right, now we need a motion for the official mill rate for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, which will be eight point three three.
I'll motion.
Okay, Alicia? All right, there's a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, James. Okay, Alicia?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Lee?
Oh, my, he's keeping saying, Matt?
Yes.
Carla? Yes. Okay, so four. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to consider to go into closed session.
I'll motion.
Okay, all right. And that is done at seven thirty-six.
Six and a half.
Jeez.
Oh, we're getting it now.
Have you become an Einstein lately, or what? With Mary by your side, right?
Thank you very much.